Welcome, everybody, to the special meeting of the Barreese Union School District Board of Trustees. We have four of five school board members present. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. First on our agenda for review and discussion is item 3A, school boundary and reconfiguration presentation superintendent.
Thank you. This evening, we will have two presentations for the board. The first presentation will be from our district demographer, Tom Williams. He will share with you what he's been able to put together based on the board's decision in December regarding our selected sites for closure for 2526. He'll review the proposed boundary realignments. And you have an opportunity also to ask questions regarding that. We also will have a second presentation that will review the impacts of those new boundaries and program relocations that need to happen as a result. Then, just kind of going over the agenda, we'll have room for public comment. And then after public comment, the board has time to do questions, discussion, et cetera. So with that, we'll begin with our demographers' analysis. Tom, welcome.
Thank you. I worked with Kevin on what your capacities were and possible capacities were for next year. And then looked at the schools you closed for the ways that we could break those numbers up as limited as possible while still staying in the capacity of the schools that they would be sent to. And on that basis, if you'll go to the next slide, please, Kim. We came up with these proposals. First one is the portion of Laneview that is west of the center of Morrell Avenue is being added to the Northwood area. And the students in that area will have Northwood as their home school. The portion of Laneview that is east of the center of Morrell Avenue is being added to the Majestic Way area. And the students in that area will have Majestic Way as their home school. The special ed students, however, at Laneview will be reassigned to Somerdale. That's... Those numbers work. Each school will be bigger than the other schools in the district in the first year, but they still work based on the capacities that Kevin has given me. Then for item two, the portions of Cherrywood that are north of the center... This is a long sentence, by the way. They're north of the center of Hostetler Road or west of the center of Capitol Avenue and north of the center of Sierra Road are being added to the Brooktree attendance area. And students in that area will have Brooktree as their home school. The portion of Cherrywood that is east of the center of Capitol Avenue, between the centers of Hostetler and Sierra Roads, is being added to the Ruskin area. And students in that area will have Ruskin as their home school. And then the portion of Cherrywood that is south of the center of Sierra Road is being added to the Somerdale area. And students in that area will have Somerdale as their home school. The Mandarin Immersion students will be assigned to Ruskin. And the special ed students now at Cherrywood will be reassigned to Vincy Park. All the numbers work with this breakup. We couldn't put more students in Ruskin without having a Ruskin problem. And then for the portion of Toyon that is east of the center of White Road is being added to the Noble area. And students in that area will have Noble as their home school. The portion of Toyon that is west of the center of White Road is being added to the Somerdale area. And the students in that area will have Somerdale as their home school. Those are all pretty clean breaks based on geography. Next slide, please. Here's the map, what it would look like. These schools are not involved in the same attendance areas as before, so this is Vincy Park. But otherwise, you'll see the Northwood area now has everything west of Morrell Avenue, including Cataldi Park. Brooktree picks up the north and west parts of what had been in Cherrywood. Ruskin picks up the east-central part that had been in Cherrywood. And Somerdale picks up the south part that had... what is now in Cherrywood, plus the west part is now in Toyon. The Noble picks up the east part of Toyon. In terms of the new boundaries, not accounting boundaries that didn't change, I think these are pretty clean boundaries, pretty clear on major streets. Next slide, please, Kim. Okay. Again, I look at where the kids live, not necessarily the schools they happen to attend when I do all my analyses. And when you're talking about a new attendance areas in particular, you definitely want to look at where your kids live, not just the schools they happen to attend this year because of overflows and TK capacity issues and things like that. And with the new boundaries, for next year, not for this year, for next year, with the new boundaries, we're talking about 561 projected Northwood resident kids plus 10 kids coming in from outside that attendance area for a projected school enrollment of 573. This does not include special ed kids that could have been out of that school. We're putting those special ed kids now at Vincy Park anyways. Majestic Way would have 545 kids for next year. I want to point out that from this year to next year, based on the number of kids in fifth grade in the Majestic Way area compared to what I'm projecting in kindergarten, that population is going to go down by 74 kids. So even though it's got a big number now, that number's going to be much less next year, even with this boundary adjustment. With 23 incoming kids from outside the attendance area, I'm projecting 568 kids attending that school next year. For Brooktree, I'm projecting 500... Does everyone see where I'm looking in the middle column in this report? In terms of the enrollments I'm projecting for next year, not counting Mandarin Immersion programs and the relocated special ed programs, we're talking 433 for Brooktree, 392 for Ruskin. But of course, Mandarin Immersion will make that a much bigger number. Somerdale at 462, Noble at 490. That includes 59 incoming kids from outside the attendance area because of parent participation. And then Vincy Park with 487. So of these, you'll notice that Ruskin has the smallest number before adding Mandarin Immersion. But basically, they're all in the mid 400s or up. So there's a good, relatively good distribution between the attendance areas. And then as I go forward in the projections, looking out to the right, again, I'm dealing with just resident numbers now where the kids live. I'm projecting Majestic Way to go down by 149 kids five years out, or excuse me, four years from next year. See, maybe because there's so many more kids now in grades three, four, five than Kroll and K1 and what I'm projecting in the future kindergartens. You'll see that Northwood goes down by 48. Brooktree goes down by 97, again, because the current distribution through the grades, more kids in grades four, three, four, and five, and not very many in kindergarten first, with low kindergartens projected. You may remember when I did my presentation two months ago, the birthday suggests that the number of kindergarteners five years from now will be 20% less than they are today. So that's where a lot of these lower numbers are coming from for 2029. In Somerdale, all the schools have losses, but the big two are Brooktree and Majestic Way. You're ending up with virtually all the numbers of the Northwood being in the 300s or 400s. And with that off stop, and of course, I should say Ruskin with Mandarin Immersion. Does that have any questions, any issues, any concerns with these boundaries? Do you want to go back to the slide that shows the map? Thank you. Do you want to wait for the rest of the presentations before you have your questions? Okay.
All right. Good evening. So, again, I'm here to kind of discuss the impacts of the school boundary changes that Tom just discussed and presented with you and how that impacts each of our school sites. Because, again, while Tom talks about the resident-student numbers, we're taking a look at more than just the students who live in that area because not all of the resident students end up attending that home school site. Thank you. So upon receiving Tom's data, we know that adjustments had to be made from the scenarios that we had presented at both the special board meeting that we had in December and then the final... when the final decision was made. You know, there were changes to those scenarios based on the three schools that were selected to be closed. So the focus that we had continued to be on relocating students to their nearest school. So in some cases, that may have changed because of the different configuration of schools that were decided to be closed. We also took into account additional site space needed for special programs such as RSP, speech, occupational therapy, music, art, and any other special programs for each of those school sites that are being impacted. I also want to remind everybody that each school has a varying capacity. So not only the number of students that each school can have if we maxed out each of the classrooms based on the grade span, but also just in the number of classrooms that each school has. So some of our schools have as little as 22 classrooms and some have as many as 32 classrooms. And so with that, we still tried to balance the schools as much as we could, similar to how Tom was describing balancing the number of resident students in each of those school site areas. We also looked at portable classrooms and where we could add those if needed based on the infrastructure that's readily available. So we had to analyze, is there enough power? Is there water? Is there sewage, et cetera, to handle more portable classrooms at our school sites if they're needed? So then we finally then accounted for classrooms that were needed for various programs to be relocated, specifically the Mandarin Immersion programs and our special education programs that Dr. McCurry is going to discuss.
Good evening. Happy New Year to everyone. Going to first just review some of the program relocations and some of the underlying thoughts behind them. So we've had a lot of discussion about our Mandarin Immersion program. And we're currently at Cherrywood, and that's 12 classrooms. And that's kindergarten through fifth grade. And so we have two grade levels per section. And so all 12 classrooms are going to be moving over to Cherrywood. Another big portion of our conversations over the last few weeks has been our relocation, relocating of our special ed programs. And so what we're really trying to do moving forward is create a pathway so that our students potentially could be at the same school from preschool all the way through fifth grade in the special ed classroom setting. So currently, we have all six of our SDC preschool classes at Toyon. And we felt the best way... The best way to... thank you. To split them up would be specifically by their program. So for example, we have two of our autism special needs classes in preschool that we're going to house at our two schools that are going to have our autism programs. And so that would make those students potentially go through preschool all the way through fifth grade. Similar to that, we house some of the other SDC preschools in conjunction with their aligning special programs as far as mild mod programs. So you'll see those located to... to Vincy, one at Somerdale, one at Noble, one at Majestic, and one at Brooktree. And then looking again at available space, like Kevin talked about, and trying to make sure that we have enough room for everyone. Had some good conversations with some of the people here on my right recently. And unfortunately, they had some other ideas on where their program could be located, but space available is at Somerville, Somerville, Somerdale. And so the three SDC classes that are currently at Laneview will be housed at Somerdale. And then similarly, we looked at the continuing programs and where spaces available. And so unfortunately, many of our schools are at capacity. And so the one school that you noticed didn't get a lot of special pro... additional students was Vincy Park. And so when we started looking specifically at the remaining programs, we went ahead and moved the majority of the remaining programs to Vincy Park because of the relocation capacity and then also continuing that preschool through fifth grade model within our mild mod classrooms that are located currently at Cherrywood and Ruskin. And then the autism program that's currently located at Toyon. And the... another potential positive here is collaboration between our special day folks and having that same pathway and collaborating between the grade levels. And so that's something also that we can also potentially look at as a positive and integrating these classes as much as possible too because they'll have definitely inclusion opportunities throughout the majority of these schools. So that's program relocations at this point. Questions? Or can I hand it back off to Kevin?
I just had a quick question. So for our SDC autism program that was originally at Laneview and now it's going to be moved to Somerdale, is there transportation available for these students?
So all of these programs, unless it's their specific home school, will receive transportation in their IPs.
All right. So moving on, specifically for each site, what we have listed is the projected number of students and then the special programs that Dr. McCurry just mentioned that are at each of these school sites. And so again, you know, pointing out when Dr. McCurry mentioned that we're at capacity for our schools, that's when we include some of the classrooms that we need for music, the classrooms that we need for, in this particular instance, the SDC preschool. Those classrooms house, you know, usually five to 10 students, maybe 12 at the most, depending on the program. And so where you wouldn't have a classroom capacity normally at 24 to 30, depending on the grade level, these classrooms then are not necessarily to the max capacity for what they're built for. So that's one thing to keep in mind. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is that while we're at the classroom utilization capacity, all of our classrooms are not filled to the max as allowed. And so what we've done is we have utilized our projection for the number of students, figured out how many staff would be needed for all of those students, and then verified that there's enough space at each site while also maintaining those spaces that I mentioned for music or art, et cetera. And in some cases, some of the schools and the way that they're designed allow for music to possibly be done in the multipurpose room, which a lot of our schools currently do. But others, it may be disruptive to nearby classrooms to have music in the multi. And so we wanted to maintain separate classrooms for music to be held in those spaces. So that's why you might see where we may be under the number of students compared to the classroom capacities that you saw previously at other meetings. That's the reason why. These numbers also are for our TK through five, general ed, and SDC students. It does not include the number of students within the SDC preschool programs. So at Brooktree, we have the SDC programs that Dr. McCurry mentioned and a projected student population of 446 students. At Majestic Way, we have projected students at 568 with three SDC classes there as well. We are also looking at adding two portables to maintain some of that music and art space. The other thing to point out about Majestic Way also is that there's currently two portables that were on that particular site that used to house county office programs. They've been vacant. The county hasn't used them in a number of years. And I believe at the December board meeting, we bought those two portables off of the county for $1. So those are now available for us to use. So previous presentations did not list those as being available for us to use because we did not own those buildings. We do own them now, so now they're available for our use. So Majestic Way classroom count has changed slightly from previous presentations. So I wanted to point that out. Noble has projected number of students at 495. They have the parent participation program at that school site. And they also have the three SDC classes there as well. Northwood projects at 565 students. And as Dr. McCurry mentioned, no special programs at that particular site. And that site is at their max classroom utilization capacity when accounting for music. However, there is still room for additional students within each grade span. At Ruskin, this is going to be now the largest school because of the Mandarin Immersion program. So total students, 691. Mandarin Immersion program is 12 classrooms. And then we're adding three portables to allow the school to maintain the gym that they have for the students, which is located in one of the portables. And they also have the science lab. And then we also have maintained two portables there so that they could be used for music since their multipurpose room is one of the ones that's surrounded by a number of classrooms. So we wanted to maintain that at that school site. So that's why we're adding the portables at that site. And then we're also adding some restrooms over on that side of the school since the nearest restrooms are pretty far. So adding the portables over there. We're also adding a bank of restrooms. And so even though it is a portable building that will hold those restrooms, there are permanent restrooms. They're tied into the sewer, so they're not... They're very similar. It'll be very similar to the restrooms at Brooktree. So there's restrooms in a portable type or modular building at Brooktree, and it's going to be similar to that. And then we have Somerdale. Somerdale is growing to 475 students with the four SDC classes being relocated there. And then lastly, Vincy Park. Vincy Park is projected to be at 522 students, adding the SDC programs that Dr. McCurry mentioned. We're also adding two SDC programs from the county office of education there. So that's also going to be located at that school site. Vincy Park is the one school that had the most capacity outside of Ruskin. They have the most number of classrooms, 32 classrooms. All right. Any questions about any of the school sites and the configurations before I move on?
I just had a quick question relating to the movement of our preschools. So for each of the sites that they're going to, are they going to have proper bathroom accommodations? Because they're the little ones.
Yeah. So that's a good question. That... and that was taken into consideration in the relocation. So each of the schools that they're being relocated to have either pods where we would have the appropriate sized bathrooms for them. Or in Vincy Park's case, there are two portable classrooms near the front of the school that Sunshine School was using. We're going to refurbish those, and those will have restrooms inside of the classrooms because they currently have those in there. And we're going to remodel them to be appropriate for our preschool age kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions about any of the school sites?
Any reason Northwood doesn't have any special programs? Is it capacity or...?
Yeah, it came down to capacity. Northwood, in the current configuration, based on the boundary changes, would be utilizing all of their classrooms. They would have one classroom for music. And then one of the music classes would need to be held in the multipurpose room.
Right. And the other question is right here with the... with Ruskin. You said there's a portable that houses the gym?
Yes.
What kind of gym is it?
It's... has gym equipment and exercise equipment in there. My understanding is paid for by a grant. Oh. Around 2015 or so, somewhere around there. And it's housed in the very last portable, right before the three blue new ones on the right, top right corner of that map.
Yeah, interesting. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So moving on. Next is going to be the Safe Routes to School. So we understand that all of our schools are growing in size. So we're going to be starting discussions with the city of San Jose and talking to them about how we can particularly, you know, make the routes to school safer, what crosswalks we can add, what type of parking enforcement support we can receive from the city of San Jose. One thing that we are aware of is that we're aware of two crosswalk projects in the works right now, adding crosswalk lights, the blinking lights that you see. There's one that's being planned at Sierra Monicae, which is over by Ruskin. And then you have one at Cropley and Messina, which is over near Majestic Way towards the back. So that'll be helpful for any of our students that walk that will need to cross those streets to get to school. So we do know those are in the works. We're also going to take a look at anywhere else that we can ask for support from the city with any crosswalks, crossing guards, things of that nature. We'll also talk to them about safety patrol training and can we bring that back? Safety patrol is at one of our school sites right now. We used to have it at more of those. You know, Dan Norris is looking into where all of our crossing guards are currently located with the city and maybe where we can reallocate those crossing guards based on need. And then Dan and I are also going to start to reevaluate drop-off and pickup areas and what the procedures are based on the new programs being located at some of the sites that haven't historically had special ed programs that will now have those. And then what's the most efficient way to direct traffic at some of the school sites based on the increase in student enrollment?
And just to add to that with just Safe Routes to School, there are various offices within the city of San Jose that we're coordinating with. So we've already had one preliminary meeting. We have a second meeting coming up next week. And this will be ongoing. So it's, you know, they're very aware of our circumstances and have shared with us different informational pieces that they will need moving forward to be able to support the adjustments. Councilmember Cohen, very supportive of these efforts. He'll be the lead voice in terms of supporting any infrastructure-type projects and changes with crosswalks, crosswalk enhancements that might be needed. In talking with the Safe Routes to School director for the city, they shared, you know, the city has a process for doing analysis in terms of traffic. And so they shared they won't begin that analysis until the fall begins. They need to be able to have a two-month timeframe to be able to study the ebb and flow of traffic. And then they can proceed with putting in whatever enhancements might be needed. But they shared, whatever we can project at this time, we'll definitely share that information with them now. And then in terms of crossing guards, that's the San Jose Police Department is responsible for that support. And so we're working in unison with the city with the individual that's responsible there. One thing that they did share, you know, with any crossing guards that are currently at sites that will no longer be utilized, we can shift that crossing guard to another area where we would benefit from. And then, you know, also, again, letting them know if we feel that we need additional crossing guards in certain areas, they'll examine that and determine that. And also, we'll collaborate with them in... They said one thing that's been a challenge for the city has been crossing guard hiring. And so anyone, you know, in our community that's open to being part of that process, you know, will definitely help promote, you know, those employee employment opportunities. But that's where then I asked San Jose PD, well, you know, we've had safety patrol in our schools before. While you're navigating crossing guard placement, you know, can we have SJPD provide training then to our community members that are willing to volunteer and be part of safety patrol, et cetera, so we can have that guidance and do that in partnership? So that's another idea. And then, of course, our own internal evaluations of drop-off and pickup.
One thing I will mention is with the... with San Jose, the city of San Jose Department of Transportation, where they talk about the traffic impact study, I think you should push back a little bit more on that because I worked with them on the traffic impact on... along Cherrywood, actually, and also along where I live. It's frustrating to get them to listen to your concerns because their analysis follows a different methodology than what we see as residents and parents dropping off and picking up. Because we see the challenges, the small challenges that, you know, of people not following the rules and whatnot. And we see that firsthand, but they don't always necessarily are able to... And we see that firsthand, but they don't always necessarily are able to take that into consideration. So I would say just push back on them more aggressively, ask them to be more aggressive about it because this is a serious issue for not just our school district. I think multiple school districts are facing similar issues. But when you have a next discussion, please, if you can reiterate two or three more times so they, they know that we are serious about it.
And again, that's also why we've done early outreach, you know, because typically there's not a lot of conversation that, you know, occurs. So, you know, we reached out, letting them know we wanted in-person meetings for these discussions with these individuals because we, we said we're already starting to formulate what that's going to look like. We want to give that to you now. We don't want to wait until the summer and, you know, and be, you know, and have to go through the different procedures that they have to follow in a short timeframe. We want to be able to do that now. So they're open to having those conversations. We're having, like I said, we have a, a meeting scheduled already next week, I believe. So with all of the key folks in, in all of these areas. But we'll, we'll follow suit on that.
Oh, I also just wanted to add too, if the city or if you all, if staff sees any flags for infrastructure improvement for the crosswalks or anything like that, the city is at a budget shortfall right now. But if you were to fly, if you can flag it for us as board members, we can bring it to our state representatives because I think the state budget does have some flexibility for infrastructure improvements. And so we can go and advocate funding that way, too.
Yeah, thank you for that because that was certainly a conversation we had last week about potential for, you know, pedestrian bridges and things of that nature. And, and that's what was shared with me, that we would need state legislative support in terms of accessing more funds than what the city has.
So the other thing, and maybe this might come up in the, in the, in our discussions is when you say reevaluate drop off and pick up procedures, you know, we also want to look at the, the timing, drop off and pick up times, especially in the Ruskin-Saramont circle. Because Saramont start time is eight o'clock, Ruskin is eight oh five, if I remember correctly, correct? And maybe it works okay right now, but with more number of students coming, coming in, that's going to be a challenge. So, you know, if you're looking at adjusting the time, I, I realize that Saramont is zero period too, correct? They have a seven twenty, zero period as well. So I'm sure many of the kids are going there. But even then, there, there are, there will be more students coming and three hundred plus additional students above what we have at Ruskin now. And that's, that's a five-minute window within that same circle. The people are trying to come in and get, getting out of that area. So maybe that's one of the things to see if we can change the bell schedule a little bit to get the traffic moving more smoothly. I know it's easier said than done, I understand the challenges behind it. But that's something that, that's definitely a concern because that five-minute window is not, not enough between Saramont and Ruskin, considering the number of students that we're expecting there.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, so next steps. So the recommended board action is not tonight. Tonight's just the discussion. The recommended board action is scheduled for Wednesday, February twelfth at seven PM here in the boardroom. And then each one of us will kind of go over the next steps as well for each of our departments. I'll start with my area on the top right-hand side. So with business services, our next steps are the moving logistics, of course. Each school site, whether they're closing or they're a receiving school, you can see all of our schools are receiving either students from closed schools or programs. So we're needing to work out those logistics for moving our staff and even moving staff within the school sites. Because the way school sites are configured right now, they're used to having a lot of space and empty classrooms that they're using for a variety of different things. And so there will need to be a lot of movement and changes on all of our campuses. So we're working on that. One of the things that we're, we're doing is we're going to be putting out a bid to hire movers to do most of the moving, since it'll be done in bulk and all at one time. So we're trying to make it more efficient for everybody. Looking also next at facilities needs. So I mentioned the portables and the restroom that we're bringing in. Trustee Haug mentioned, you know, are we putting in the right type of restroom facilities for our preschool students? Those are all things that we're going to continue to evaluate once we have solidified where our reprogram is going and what those additional needs are. You know, refurbishing the, the two portables at Vincy Park, things of that nature. So we're going to be looking at all of those things to see if, if we covered everything. Is there additional needs? We're also adding more storage at most of our schools so that it can be more organized. So in some of the pods, we're going to be adding in storage shelving so that things can be organized better to think better utilization of the space. So we're looking at all of those options as well. And then, as we mentioned, the safe routes to school. So those are all the things that'll be happening in business services. Then I also do want to mention that with the moving logistics comes all of the technology and everything. So we have a lot of smart boards and displays in, in all the classrooms, iPads, things of that nature. We're working on the movement of all of that, plus our office staff as well and the moving logistics for all of that. All right.
Good evening, board. For human resources, we, our next steps are to find a placement for all classified and certified staff that's been impacted by the closures and organization. So HR is currently identifying vacancies so that we can place the impacted staff. One of the ways we're doing it is that we've partnered with our labor partners on MOU for the Early Separation Notice Program. And this is available to all certificated and classified staff to qualify. So the district is providing a $2,000 one-time payment. If they share with the district by February the fourteenth, that they are going to separate from the district at the end of the school year, which is either resignation or retirement. We plan to notify the classified staff of their assignments for next year by the end of this school year, the last day of school. And certificated staff, we plan to do that by March the twenty-fourth. One of the things that is available to the certificated staff for, that are in the schools and the schools that are closed is that if they want to follow their students, they can do that by submitting a transfer form to the HR department by March the tenth. And they will have first priorities to go where their students are going. If not, then they will have first, first priority for any of the open spaces. Some additional dates for certificated staff. By February the twenty-eighth, we're going to post the preliminary staffing list. And this is just to let people know what schools they're going to be at next year. This also includes for those schools, for those staff that don't have a school. So we're also going to let them know a TBD by that time. And then, like I said before, by March the twenty-fourth, everybody's going to know their preliminary assignment, including those teachers that are at the schools that are closing. To help the, the teachers have some more time to pack their belongings that are going to be transferred to the other schools or the other classrooms, the district is going to open up the classrooms later this year than we typically do. Though I have an opportunity to work in their classrooms up until June the eighteenth. And also at the beginning of the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six school years, we're going to open up the schools earlier. And they'll have an opportunity to come in on August the fourth to help pack up and remove some of their belongings. So those are some of the next steps for human resources. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Ed Services, so a big focus for the next couple of weeks, potentially month, is parent notification. So once we have the attendance boundaries settled, the schools or the parents who are at the schools specifically that are being closed will be receiving communication from our office on what their new school will be. And we'll also direct them to intra-district transfers if they're not happy with the school that they're being moved to. So the process would be able to start pretty soon after that. We also have to look at space available at the schools in order to make sure that there is space for other students that would have to place them at a different school. Another big focus of our department that we haven't been able to launch yet is our online enrollment. And so our online enrollment process will start as soon as we get everything up and running. We're hoping at least either the week that we have off in February, during the February break, or the week we come back. And so once again, those are the online enrollment system for the parents to the incoming TK and kindergarten students to register for our school and any other families that are wanting to come from another district, moved, et cetera. So those are our two big focus areas, kind of in the student services realm. And then, of course, we're going to be working specifically on the instructional materials and what's going to happen to all the instructional materials and how do we move those from school to school? We'll be working with Nancy Jones, our district librarian, our LMTs. We've already had some conversations with Dan and Tony on what that might look like. So we're having a lot of conversations about instructional materials that need to be moved in addition to some of the other items that teachers will be packing and then communicating and working with our special ed programs. So there's a lot of programs that are going to be moved, as you can see, communicating with staff and trying to find best locations at their new schools for those programs that are going to be moved. And a lot of support is going to be needed, not only for the adults, but also for the students. And so that also focuses on the mental wealth and health, mental health and wellbeing of all of our folks in the Berriessa School District. So there is counseling support services already available. And we've been making sure that our principals are putting that out in their weekly or bi-week or bi-monthly newsletters, not only to our staff, but all, also to parents who might be dealing with some students that are still trying to figure out what's going to happen for next school year. So we're going to have that support all the way through the beginning of their next school year. We also have a handful of parent workshops that we're going to be holding. We have a good relationship with the county office of ed. And one of our parents, former parents, Jamie Koo, has offered up a handful of parent workshops that we're going to be offering in the spring for parents on transitioning and making sure that students are feeling good about their health and safety and can also discuss questions or issues and also how to help support parents have these discussions with their own children. And then we're also working very collaboratively with our schools that will be receiving students. A lot of really good ideas from, we heard from our BDAC meeting a couple of weeks ago, ideas that are already coming in with new T-shirts and new logos and other activities that will be potentially held in the spring as well. Open houses, of course, would also be an opportunity for parents to come over and see the school. Field trips so that they can start seeing the, the grounds and be able to start making friends and understand which of their friends might be going to their new schools. So there's a lot of work to do overall in the Ed Services Department. And we're here to help support in any way we can.
Dr. McCurry. A question regarding the enrollment, online enrollment dimension. So it's, it's not launched yet, it's being launched.
Right, so we can't launch it until we know where attendance is.
I gotcha. Is, is it, it's optional, correct? I mean, you can still fill out a paper.
So we're almost all completely online.
And so concerned about the, there are some parents that may not have access to.
Yeah, no, we always have a paper enrollment packets, but we always try to help support our parents by doing it online. So if they go into the front office and ask for support, the clerk or the school secretary can help them as well.
At, at the site?
At the school site. They can come here and we can also help direct them and get them up and running if they need it.
Right.
So there's also a possibility too, that we haven't discussed at length. But also another possibility throughout all of this is to have a parent, you know, like Zoom, anybody that's coming into the school district to understand what does it, what's going to look like? What's the enrollment process? And we looked at Alum Rock, they also did something similar to just understand what the boundaries are after the, the attendance boundaries are confirmed, to have another open session via Zoom with all parents so that they can understand the impact on their students. So they don't, and they, and they also can hear, they're going to be receiving something in the mail or Parent Square that they would like to fill out and what the process is for the intra and potentially inter-district transfer process. So those are also a couple of things that we're looking into. For me, the communication is key. Making sure that we over-communicate in the next couple of months so that everybody really understands what the process is, not only with parents, but with staff and with students as well.
I just want to quickly say thank you Cabinet for all your work on this. This is a really difficult process and so I'm really happy that we're moving forward. And I want to emphasize that fact as well, communication is key. And so I hope the dates that are being listed, or I would recommend that the dates being listed be published on our website as well, you know. Parents, please check your emails and also please stay in communication with our bargaining units as well. Want to make sure that everyone is being taken care of in this process. And so thank you.
I just had a couple of questions or issues that I'm looking forward to hearing is how the middle school boundaries are going to potentially be impacted. I'm not sure, but that could be presented during the next school board meeting to realign with the elementary schools, because I know some elementary schools now they're more or less impacted by, for example, Majestic Way. So I'm not sure if you have enough information to discuss that now. Another thing I want to hear about is which schools have been impacted with the Title I based on this proposal? Are some schools losing their Title I status or are other schools gaining it? And the other thing that we probably need to discuss, I know the district has, I'm sure you're discussing it with your cabinet, but what are we going to do with these now closed sites? So perhaps a presentation in the near future for that?
If you want to be looking at changing middle school boundaries to be in sync with these new elementary boundaries, partly or wholly, you would, it would be more recommended to do it next year because that'd be the first year the kids flowing out of the new attendance areas will be going from elementarys into middle schools. Does that make sense?
It does, and I agree with you. We need to have the staggered procedure. I don't, I don't believe we should immediately do it, but there needs to be a discussion though. And it probably needs to be staggered so that way it doesn't impact the kids now.
Any other questions? I have one question for Ed Services. Any detrimental impacts to either existing programs at the schools that remain or any loss of, you know, just amenities in terms of facilities?
So we're going to be working, we've already started working with our principals specifically on what's the future hold, right? So with budgets and everything really hasn't been decided yet. There are a lot of conversations about looking forward to transitioning from one school to the next. What does that look like at each specific school site? I think we're still in the planning phase. But that's definitely something that we're talking about at our principal meetings. What are some of the potentially closed schools and how they can replicate some of those same services at those schools that they'll be moving into? And then, as you can also see, the addition of students, they're going to be also receiving additional funds specifically for the number of students at their school sites. And so the principals also work collaboratively with Mr. Franklin and Mr. Kitoriano on submitting their budgets and then working with my department specifically on how we can continue the services or boost those services if we have additional funds and potential more Title I funds.
So but it's not looking like the schools that are going to remain open are going to lose any kind of service that they now provide to students?
No, not at this point. I think it's going to just be the opposite.
Right, right, so they're actually going to gain, okay, net gain, all right, thank you.
And you asked about facilities as well, and so that was taken into account. Mr. Franklin can share more, but as they went through each school size, they referenced this evening to ensure that there was still a space for any existing activities as well. as what we know all of our schools offer, that there is a space for RSP, that there's a space for speech, that there's space for the art instruction that's happening now that for, you know, the ongoing music program that we have, all of those, you know, if a school had a special space like the science lab, like the gym, those are maintained within these schematics.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from the board? So we can move on. All right, so up next, we have public comment on agenda items. So this is the public's chance to, to comment. So I have a few cards here. Let me read the speaker conduct before, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so speaker conduct, "For all who wish to address the board during public comment periods, speakers are requested to state your name and affiliation for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board, five minutes per organization, and a maximum of 20 minutes per topic. However, in exceptional circumstances, when necessary to ensure full opportunity for public input, the board president may, with board consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or for, and/or the time allotted for each speaker. Any such adjustments shall be done equitably so as to allow a diversity of viewpoints. The president may also ask members of the public with the same viewpoint to select a few individuals to address the board on behalf of that viewpoint. Speakers are reminded to communicate with respect, fairness, and courteousness to each other and to all present. We ask that you not use the name of any district employee in your comments. The board welcomes orderly communications from the public." So saying that, does the board want to extend the allotted time period of 20 minutes to allow for everybody? And do we want to reduce, do you know approximately how many speakers we have? I think we have more than 10 cards. 14, so that's, what is that? 42 minutes?
Should be. These are exceptional circumstances.
Right, so, okay, so if everybody takes, so just, just remember if you're a speaker, yeah, you don't have to take your entire three minutes. If you can say what you're going to say in less, you know, sometimes a shorter message is more effective, so just remember that. But everybody has three minutes if you wish to take up your time. Joe Herman, you want to go first on behalf of C-TAP, and you have five minutes as the C-TAP president.
Good evening. My name is Joe Herman. I'm the president of the California Teacher Association of Bariessa. Been in the district about 29 years, teach elementary school. And so tonight, I know that our assistant superintendent of HR had said that, you know, we had created an MOU, and we are working, you know, to help our members transition, to help the communities move as quickly. And there is flexibility in that MOU that as issues come up, we can address that and try to sit back down to bargain and help our members transition and as we know our working conditions, our students' learning conditions. But tonight, I'm here to support the Laneview SDC special ed teachers. Our SDC special ed educators work with our most neurodiverse students, our most vulnerable and challenging students. And so tonight, they're here to present an alternative that wasn't up this evening. So we know how creative and thoughtful and that the board can be in solving problems. So I ask you to do that this evening. And so you're going to hear stories tonight from the SDC special ed group that wants to keep their community together. They want to bring that community to Northwood. So listen to them, it'll be educational, and hopefully it'll help guide you in your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. All right, our next speaker for the night is Melissa Mays. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was devastated that Laneview was selected for school closure, and I'm deeply disappointed in the board's decision. You prioritize the loudest voices over making an equitable choice for Title One schools and special education programs. As board members, your primary responsibility is to base decisions on student needs and outcomes, not the demands of the adults. That being said, I'd like to share my experience as a parent of a child in Laneview's special education program. My son is nonverbal autistic. He attended Laneview from preschool through fifth grade, and each year our gratitude for the program grew. Our son was valued and cared for. The educators met him where he was and provided the support he needed. He was part of the school community, not just a student in a special program. His classrooms were inside the school building, right next to general education classrooms. His peers knew him, included him, and accepted him. Throughout his years at Laneview, his classes joined general education students on field trips. I witnessed firsthand the kindness and empathy from mainstream students because inclusion benefits them too. Family nights accommodated the students with sensory needs, ensuring they could participate. The school created a true culture of belonging. I served on the consolidation committee, and one of the scoring criteria was whether the program could exist on another campus. If Laneview's special education program is to be relocated, the new site must provide the same conditions. Classrooms with four walls, integrated within the main building, not isolated and portables. The entire program, preschool through fifth, must remain together so that families aren't forced to move from school to school. And finally, this program must continue feeding into Morrell Middle School where the teachers have worked collaboratively to ensure a smooth transition for the students. I urge you to uphold your responsibility to put student needs first. This program's success depends on the thoughtful planning and continuity. Please do what is right for the students. And to sort of better explain what I'm saying, Sommerdale is a pod. So for my child, a pod would not work for him. He would elope and run out of the classroom. There would be loud noise from the neighboring classrooms. That's why four walls, but near his counterparts in the class, the grades that he's in, would suit him best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jackie Hoffman.
I'll wait till everyone's looking at me. I teach my kindergarteners. To make sure you have eyes on the speaker, and it just shows respect, so I expect that too. Good evening. I'd like to start by introducing myself. My name is Jackie Hoffman. I've taught Kinder or K1 at Laneview for 26 years. Previous to that, I did my student teaching in Ruskin. And now I can't read because my eyes are wet. Maybe glasses will help. And did a couple of long-term subbing at Sommerdale as well. But I've been a part of Bariessa for 45 years. You see, I attended Noble and Beaumont, and I'm also Bariessa's legacy. My mom has taught over 30 years in this district. And including my brother and myself and my mom, we've been part of this district for over 75 years, just in my family. I'm very proud of Bariessa. I was very proud of Bariessa. I'm very disappointed right now. I could spend a lot of time and energy on discussing why and how the process of closing Laneview was unfair. But I, and I urge you to reconsider, even though I don't think you will. But we, I, we are here to talk about how we can make these transitions smoother rather than more difficult. Because right now, we're feeling punished. Every time we turn around, Laneview's getting it. You may not be aware, but we've been told we cannot take our donation monies that we have because that's just going to go back to the district, our classroom donation monies. We've been told we can't take the equipment, the technology we have because school money is district money, so that's going to be reabsorbed and then disputed, distributed equitably, which I'm going to define equity in a minute, to other places, even though that was site money for specific classroom use. Summer School is going to be at Laneview, so we have to be out by June 18th. We have no option to continue to pack if we want to, or do you be able to go through the process? We have to be up, out, tidy out because they chose Laneview of the, all the schools that are staying open. Laneview is going to close and get special ed. Summer School? Why? That's punishing us. We didn't do anything wrong to make our school close. I'm waiting for eyes, sorry. Thank you. We didn't do anything. We've worked hard. Our community is part of my family. It is our Laneview family. And it's not fair that this transition that's already difficult and would be difficult for everyone to become more difficult because choices that are being made are what's easy, not what's best for students, and for, we're part of the community as well. Bariessa's statement, mission statement is that Bariessa Union School District provides all students the skills to become lifelong learners and successful 21st century global citizens. The definition of equity is that the fair distribution of resources and opportunities based on individual needs. Equality, and the reason why I'm defining this is this was brought up on December 18th. Equality is the equal treatment of everyone regardless of their needs. The decisions that were made on December 18th were not equitable. It was based on equality.
Thank you for your comments. All right, up next, Natalie Enriquez.
My name is Natalie Enriquez. And I currently have two children attending Laneview in second and third grade. And today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Laneview SDC program. My son, Joe Enriquez, attends. A couple of days ago, I received notification of a proposal that all Laneview SDC students will be transferred to Sommerdale while all mainstream students will be divided between Northwood and Majestic. So today, I asked the Board of Trustees, I tell you all, not only have you decided to repurpose students from their school, but now you are proposing on alienating the SDC students who will have the most difficulty transitioning into a new school. A school where they will not see any more familiar faces of staff, teachers, and friends. I want, you not, what you may not know is that the SDC students not only develop friendships within their class, but with, but with mainstream students as well. So the likelihood of sending these students to a new school with no familiar faces will cause major regression academically, socially, and most important, emotionally. This proposal will not only be damaging to the special group of students, but it also feels discriminatory by separating only them, this group of students, from their peers. I ask the Board to take all this into consideration before making your final decision.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, Radha Bala.
Good evening, Board. Radha Bala, preschool special education teacher, currently at Toyon. I was hoping I was last. I think everyone here has said everything beautifully, eloquently. I appreciate the questions that the Board asked. I do have a question. I understand that this is a difficult decision, but when I'm looking at the schools and I'm looking at how we've distributed all the different students based on whatever it is, I have noticed that some schools don't have any special ed students. It seems almost on purpose from this side of the room. And it's just a really difficult decision. I know we're all trying to do the best we can, but it's going to be ripping the Band-Aid, and it's going to be a difficult decision. And at this point, that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, Amy Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Amy Martinez, and I'm a preschool SDC teacher at Toyon. I was moved to Toyon last year against my wishes after spending 17 years at Laneview. Now that both schools will be closing, I'm here to ask you to consider placing me back with my Laneview team. Before last year, Laneview was the only school in the district that gave special education students the opportunity to attend the same school from preschool through fifth grade. Beyond the benefits of routine, comfort, and predictability for students, this also provided them with mainstreaming opportunities throughout elementary school as it is the Laneview culture, that all students are included and valuable members of the Laneview family. Any Laneview parent will tell you that this contributed positively to their child's elementary school experience and made them feel a sense of belonging, as well as fostered their emotional development and social skills. The Laneview SDC team works so cohesively and are able to seamlessly transition students when they move on to the next grade. After feeling like an outsider and that I didn't have a connection to my placement the last two years, it further reinforced for me that the preschool through fifth grade continuum strengthens the collaboration and supports that benefit my students with autism at such a critical stage of their development. This is my 19th year with the district, and I know what I need to flourish as an educator and what works best for my students. I'm asking for you to please consider placing me with the Laneview SDC team at their new school site, as I would love to continue my work within the program that I worked so hard to help build. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Tom McDonald.
We're going to be talking eight to four, three minutes because this is what we got. Got a lot to say, so you can just cross your hands off as we get to us. All righty, Tom McDonald, Laneview, fifth grade. Jackie already went over the mission statement, I'm going to go on with that. The board's decision to target schools with Title One status, schools with predominant Hispanic student populations, and schools with moderate severe special education programs contradicts this district's mission statement. It's the school board's responsibility to create policy and district administration's responsibility to implement said policy. By targeting, targeting these schools, this current board is setting precedent for vision for this policy. Laneview promotes inclusivity, so why doesn't this current board? Laneview was not given the opportunity to speak during the school closure decision, so we're speaking now. The board allowed public commentators openly attack the quality and integrity of schools up for closure, and that was unacceptable. Laneview students are consistently held in high regard by principals and by staff from Morrell Middle School that have moved to Laneview because our students are inclusive of all their peers. This decision was political in nature, and to say otherwise would be insulting. Board members clearly had other interests at play, both privately and professionally, and this resulted in an unfair and uninformed decision-making process. The board was informed by Dr. Fuentes that students receiving Title One services would likely lose those services after boundaries were redrawn. The board refused to listen to that fact and insisted they would be able to procure funds for those services when, in reality, it wasn't a funding issue. They're not going to qualify and will not be able to receive those services due to this decision. Laneview is the only school in Santa Clara County that met state requirements for inclusion of students with special needs into mainstream classrooms, yet that was not considered. Churnancy was one reason why Laneview was brought up for school closure. House closing the only school within reasonable distance to our student population going to help with churnancy concerns. Is the district going to be providing transportation for students that they've wronged? Northwood is the school being proposed as a site to absorb Laneview students. Northwood has a school dress code requirement. Who's going to be paying for the clothes for these incoming Title One students? It's not fair to put that on the families. Participation of board members in this vote may have been a violation of the California Political Reform Act of 1974. This process had flaws. Reps were not elected by our school community. The rep from Laneview is not a parent or a current student of Laneview. Laneview did not attend crucial meetings, and Laneview was not notified to have a replacement sent. It was recommended by the consolidation committee to remove Laneview from the list at the October 3rd meeting. At the next meeting on October 17th, not only was Laneview back on the list, but was moved from number five to number three due to parental pressure from other schools. Parent influence- from other schools. Parent influence should not be a part of this committee's process. It should be an impartial decision based on findings and data presented. The Board claimed closing three elementary schools was the option to save the most money when the District Administration's presentation clearly proved that was not true.
Thank you. Did you submit a card just so I can find it?
Yeah, Angela Jacobson, sorry. Yeah. And just to reiterate, this was a collaboration with all of Laneview staff and teachers, so we're just kind of reading what we've all come up with and what we feel. You should hear to hopefully keep us in mind when you're going through your decisions, please. Okay. So, expectations of moving forward. As Joe already mentioned, you'll hear more, our sped department, the most important thing for Laneview is for our sped department to transfer together to a single site. Our team excels with inclusion of students in mainstream classrooms, and this is something that must continue. Our sped team will be able to model inclusion at their new site and help classroom teachers include this population in their own classrooms. We also want some teachers from Laneview to transfer with our sped team because we understand how to successfully include students with special needs into our classrooms. And we can also help our future colleagues with these practices. If the Mandarin immersion program teaches, teachers get to transfer together, Laneview sped team should also be given that opportunity, and it is equitable thing to do for our students. And as we said, we feel the best would be Northwood. Our sped team will need classrooms that are self-contained within four walls, which Northwood has. School sites with pod classrooms will not work for this student population. They feel it's not going to benefit our kids. Concerns regarding otherism. Teachers being reassigned are concerned with how they will be accepted at their new sites. Laneview in particular feels like we have an unfair stigma about our school and we do not want to be considered labeled them. The need for portables and the use of less than ideal places for classrooms has the reassigned teachers feeling that they are going to be relegated to those rooms upon relocated. Should this happen, the district should be condoning otherism. And segregation. We want this process to be equitable. Grade levels should be left in close proximity, meaning that teachers who teach the same grade should be near each other. This may mean that teachers at the site may need to move classrooms to accommodate keeping grade levels together. Students and staff from all schools creating a new school community should be blended so as to promote strong sense of belonging amongst everyone in the new school community. Three schools will cease to exist next year and the other schools will undergo metamorphosis and making sure they're aware of that as well. When this happens, we expect equity, not equality, to be on the forefront of decision-making. All school sites are going to feel the impact of these school closures, and it is our hope that principals at all school sites are preparing their staff for these changes. It is our hope these changes on the horizon. Starting these conversations now and making plans for these changes will help combat concerns of otherism. We expect all staff to promote new school cultures during the transition. We demand to be treated regarded as people, not as numbers that you guys are looking at. Involuntary reassignment concerns. Some of you already mentioned this. Teachers should have a say. Please give us a say. We didn't have a say that our school was closed. Give us a say on, teachers should be able to choose from a list of all available openings at the end of February, based on the grade level, and based on seniority. We feel that would be fair.
Thank you.
Regarding Laneview team, we do have one more card from a staff member, Rosewood.
If you have time.
Teamwork, yeah. Concerns about the moving process. We have been told that the donation money cannot be transferred to the new sites, even though past practices have allowed this to happen as early as last school year. With technology purchases with school sites, funds removed with involuntary transferred teachers, will smart boards be traveling with teachers? Will teachers be allowed to take assigned curriculum to their new sites? Teachers have organized their curriculums and want to travel with them. Collecting and redistributing curriculum and technology would be time-consuming and a waste of funds. Can we request district-assigned furniture to move with us? Oh, okay. I'm Rosewood. I'm the 4-5 SDC teacher at Laneview. Autism classroom placement is not about moving a few classrooms into an open space at a school. It is about ensuring that each child's unique needs are met in a way that supports their growth and development. For many children, the new placement will have expected and unexpected changes, and it is the district's responsibility to lessen the impact of this decision. Our students need spaces where they are able to feel safe. A notable percentage of neurodiverse students have heightened sensory stimulus, stressors to noise and movement. The open-floor planet Somerville limits our ability to mitigate and effectively control the stimuli. We also caution the district in moving sped into portables. The practice others in already marginalized community for inclusion. It is also a visible representation of segregation. The second sentence in the mission statement of the district, the district aims to create a safe and inclusive learning environment. Diversified education can be particularly difficult to implement in an effective manner, and our community practices are based on belief, resilience, and purpose. The partnership between staff have taken decades to cultivate. The Laneview general education teacher joins special education teachers to work together in multiple teams to support inclusion. Inclusion is a belief and an idea that all education practices provide all students their right to a least restrictive environment and meaningful education. Laneview has a K-8 autism-specific program that collaborates to support strategies for all learners. We propose Northwood as our new SDC home with our relocated Laneview community. This site provides appropriate building structure, pre-embedded inclusion practices with our Laneview colleagues, and Northwood is the feeder school to Morel Middle School, which is the designated sixth through eighth grade program for SDC autism. I ask you to reconsider the plan to separate SDC from Laneview and place us with our community.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, Joe Enriquez.
Good evening, guys. My name is Joe Enriquez. I'm a proud father. Two little ones, beautiful minds, beautiful heart, children that go to Laneview. During my time at Laneview, I've had positives and I've had some negatives. But it really breaks my heart that it's continuing the negative. During this time, my son goes to, he's autistic, he's in autistic class. And during his time at school, and he's only a third grader, he's been grabbed by a teacher, he's been slapped by a teacher, he's been choked by a teacher, and now you guys are going to compound it by sending him to a whole nother school, when me and my wife, who you got to meet, she's beautiful, she came up here earlier and spoke, Natalie. You guys are going to send away where there's a small part of me that still has faith in them. Because of teachers. A small community. They're friends. They're going to separate and isolate. When I read up on things, I see things with these autistic, with my little boy. They have no voice, and it's kind of being shown right in front of us as parents to sit at home, talk, and feel that their little community that they have. The numbers, this shows this, this shows that, but really what it shows us as the parents is you just don't see them. And you demonstrate it. You know, there's certain things that are not learned by the classroom, the district, but that's taught at home with us, what we show with our little boy. That you got to see the good in people, even though you're dealt a bad hand, Papa. To my daughter. You know, I understand things, hard decisions have to be made. I understand it. It doesn't mean I have to respect it. But at that point, even though that hard decision needs to be made, I hope you guys make it with an open heart and understanding from our end that there is a small little area, small, like your parents would say, there's a small little area in your heart that's called love. Care. And hopefully you hold it for them. Because I'm sure you guys are, I don't know who's a parent, there's a couple of young ones up there, but if they are, I love my son, I love my daughter, and I love his little friends that he's made because it's been a challenge for him to make friends because he's gone from Majestic to Laneview and now to a whole nother school. So in three, four years, three different schools and a whole... I'm just seeing the challenge that we're going to have. So I thank you guys for your time, and I hope you guys, like I said, deal with the center of your heart to look at my little boy who's right there. And my daughter. That that decision you guys make affects them and us. So thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Gina Pagan.
Hi, I'm super nervous and I'm a speech pathologist, so I speak super fast. I want to start by saying that when I came to Berryessa, this is my second year, I was ready to give up on being a speech language pathologist, and it's a sad truth that's happening all over California. There's a mass exodus of specialists to work with our most neediest, most important children, in my opinion. And so I love this district. I love the district that I work for. Coming into preschool has been a life-changing situation for me, and I just want to start by saying that I'm so grateful for my community and for the parents and the children that I serve. Our relationship with preschool, which we're all housed at Toyon, and I'm not sure that many people are aware of this, but there is a preschool assessment center and a preschool assessment team. I personally perform 55 to 70 assessments per year of our babies, our little ones coming into this community. We set the tone for our relationship with our special ed families of how they are going to be received by this district. So currently, I work with four out of the six SDCs at Toyon, and I understand the need for school closures. Unfortunately, it's a necessary evil to maintain and continue serving the children of our demographic in our area, and I understand the need and the desire to have continuum services. It is so hard. Think about it. You come into preschool, then you get moved to this SDC, then you're moved to another, and it's traumatic. So I'm just asking for some more consideration and more awareness and understanding. In the maps, ooh, I have to talk faster. In the maps that were originally published, never once was there enough rooms for speech therapists or not even mentioned. So we actually have to abide by HIPAA and FERPA regulations to protect our students, and it's never been, by this board I've been watching for months, it's not been taken into effect. More than 60% of your speech therapists are here tonight in support. We have to have rooms to work with our children, and by law, they have to be protected, have a key, and be away from distracting noise so that we can actually conduct standardized assessments for our children. The Vincy Park, ooh, numbers. If you move five SDCs to Vincy Park and the preschool assessment team, that is a minimum of 160 IEPs if one IEP happens per child, and I'm concerned that the impact on our administrator is going to be too great for the need for meetings. Basically, there would be more, and that does not include RSP or GenEd, there would be more IEPs than school days in the year with the current plan in place. There will be seven special ed classrooms on this new site that all have to be moved and served by your SLPs.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have Nimesh Gorki Gogri. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. Please pronounce it correctly so I know.
Yeah, this is Nimesh Gogri. I'm a parent of a first grader at Laneview. So first of all, I just wanted to say I was deeply disappointed with the decision to close Laneview. Here is some support for the community. I understand difficult decisions have to be made, but if it was truly, there was misrepresentation from the school on any of the committees, I hope, I wish, that there's some reconsideration there. The few points I want to raise, looking forward, I want to make sure, I know the Laneview community is being split between multiple schools. There's inconsistency in after-school care between the schools, and Northwood does not have after-school care, from what I understand. The Majestic has Rock program. I don't think Northwood has anything. So I do want to make sure that that's considered, at least a consistent program is put in place across all these schools. The second thing I wanted to bring up is the middle school assignment, I think that was brought up, so I definitely want that to be part of the agenda in a future conversation because I don't want our kids to go through another sort of split with their friends again. And then the last thing, and I know, I've mentioned this a couple times and this has been brought up, about the future of the school sites that are closing. And I understand that there is going to be a separate committee to decide the future of those sites, so I'm only speculating here. If a private school were to open in that same place, that is going to impact enrollments again. I know, I mean, I was looking at the numbers from Majestic. We're already expecting 100 soon drop by three years. I live three minutes, 30 seconds walking distance from Laneview. If a private school were to open there, it's definitely going to be a consideration for me, and I'm sure there are other parents who would do that. Right now, the closest private school is either Shattford or Maryhill for me, which is at least a five-minute drive. So I, again, I don't think we are solving this problem for the future. This is going to come back in two to three years when there are more options for parents around in our neighborhoods, like opening an Amazon or Temu inside Target, right? So that's essentially what's happening or might happen. So I do urge you guys to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Up next, Alexandra Balaxo.
Hello, Board members. My name is Alexandra Balaxo, and my daughter Leila Lopez attends the Laneview SDC program. I just want to say that the team at Laneview has been amazing. Like many parents have said tonight, Leila's had a really hard time transitioning, and Laneview's been the only school and community that's actually really accepted her. The staff, the teachers, everyone has really welcomed our family, and it's really made a huge difference in Leila and the way she's thrived. When we heard that Laneview was selected to be closed, we were devastated. Transition has always been a difficult thing for Leila, and the first thing that came to our mind is what's going to happen to Leila and what's going to happen to her classmates. As many parents have brought up over here that, you know, transition is so hard for our students. Anything that changes can go ahead and make things even more difficult. Now, as we hear and we wait for what actually is going to happen with our students, you know, concerns come to our mind. You know, what will happen, you know, to meet our students' needs? What's the safety going to be like? Is inclusion going to be even considered? And this is things that are going on and on in our head. I can go on with all of my concerns. I don't have enough time to go ahead and actually discuss all my concerns, but one thing I do ask you guys is when you consider the next steps, I ask that you guys go ahead and actually ask these SDC teachers what their opinions are and actually take their opinions into consideration. They know exactly what our students need. They know how to advocate for our students. Ask the speech teachers, ask everybody exactly what they need because they know what our students need to thrive. They know what's going to be needed to go ahead and make them successful, and please consider that when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Nina Seth.
Hi, Board members. Good evening, Board members. I wanted to bring up a topic that I think someone else has brought up, but one of the parents who wasn't able to be here wanted to bring up. We know that three of the schools are closing, and I think one of the concerns that a lot of the parents have is, we know the three sites are closing, but what is going to happen with before-school care and then the after-school programs? Because, I mean, essentially, those kids are going to new schools, so we need to make sure that we have those programs. If we have programs such as Rock that's run by the city... If we have programs such as Rock, that's run by the city, that's affordable, we need to make sure that we have enough seats in place. If we have five hundred seats that are for, you know, low-income, affordable, we need to make sure that those programs are still available. For those families after the schools close. And I think that's a huge concern. You mean, we're, we're talking about having, I don't know what the total number is, but the three schools, you know, twelve hundred kids, fifteen hundred kids. I mean, those parents are going to need a place to put their kids. We have working families, we have parent, both parents working, so I think that needs to be a consideration. And I don't know if that's really been thought about. And it can't be an afterthought, right? I mean, these families are gonna start thinking about this today. It is so hard to find after-school care and childcare this, these days. And that affordability piece, I mean, that's, that's the national crisis that we're, you know, we all read about. The second thing I wanted to bring up, and it, it was really telling, I had, I, I met a friend that I hadn't seen in many, many years. Her children were going to charter school in this area. And she's decided that she wanted to move to public school. So she actually visited Vincy Park and Noble last August and was told that there was no room for her two children. Her kids are now. In private school. Those are two kids that could have been part of our district. She went there hoping to find placements for her two elementary school children. So I think the question that has been asked previously and that continues to be a concern is what is, is, do we really have open enrollment? Because I mean, this is one case. I know I've heard of other families where people have wanted to move to different schools. I mean, and this can't be the only scenario where people are coming in and asking to join the district and finding out that there's no spot. And people are not deciding they're gonna go to another school. They're deciding to go to private. That is still an option for folks. Her kids are going to curricular school at this point. They're happy with that, but that, those are just, you know, that's an example of what's, you know, taking place. So I think that needs to be a key consideration is, we keep talking about declining numbers, but they're declining because we're not opening the door. To people who actually want to participate in B U S C D. They want their kids in public school, but they're not, you know, the district is saying, we don't have room. How is that possible if we have declining enrollment? I mean, I think someone needs to look into that. So I had for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Harshitha, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Hi.
Can you say your last name?
Yeragundla. Yeragundla.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I am parent of, I'm, I'm parent of children currently attending Cherrywood. And we are really deeply saddened by the decision of closing the school. However, we have gone and we have, after reviewing the newly established boundaries, we now see that English-speaking students are being divided into three different schools. And it is very disturb, uh, very disruptive and it will create unnecessary difficulties for the parents and students as well. So in my case, I would like to bring up my, my concerns here. My kid. Actually, we live in between the Sierra Road and Barriessa Road. And in our case, my kid is a fourth grade student. And my kid has three closest friends and three of them are being split in, split into three different schools. One will go to Brooktree and one will go to Serum, I mean, one will go to Sommerdale and one will go to Ruskin. So at least, I know, I understand that we have to consolidate and we, we, we have to do that. There is no other way. But at least we have to make a little disruptive, instead of going to three schools, at least try to minimize the impact. Make it to two schools instead of three schools. And that is one, one of my concern and we try to reach out to the school district as well for the inter, regarding the internal transfers. And they mentioned that internal transfers are kind of, uh, available, but. In case if there are so many students who are applying for the internal transfers, they are mentioning that it is a lottery system. And my kid, and she is asking me, am I, am I alone going to this new school and what about my friends and is anyone coming along with me? But coming to the place in, in the, if you see the map, in, who are living in between the Sierra, uh, Sierra Road and Barriessa Road. I see, I, I see there are not, not many number of kids, only just like five streets are there and. I don't know, assigning such a small, uh, a small portion of small group of students to, uh, other school and they will become alone, right? We should have to understand them and we should have to show some empathy towards them. And for one year and I, it would be difficult for them to adjust. Even considering the demographic wise as well, it is unsafe for the elementary students to cross the busy street such as the Barriessa Road. And we have seen a couple of accidents in, in last three months itself, two accidents happened. And especially in our community, we felt that we are getting, feeling disconnected from the larger community. And my kid, I mean, my child is especially distressed about losing their best friends. I think we should have to, uh, show some empathy, uh, towards the kids to, to, uh, by this school closure decision. I hope, uh, board members understand this and try to revisit the boundaries and like, make this, uh. Consolidate, I mean, ma- make this splitting at least little disruptive, instead of splitting into three. At least try to split into two and minimize the impact. At least few of the kids will try to stay together.
Thank you for your comments.
Please understand. Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have Aditya Kumar.
Good evening, board, board members. I am Aditya. My two kid goes to Laneview currently in Kinder and third grade. My main as in, uh, part I tried to bring up here is after school care, uh, my both kid go right, right now to Rock in Laneview, but, and they will probably go to, uh. Northwood, which doesn't have Rock, it have YMCA, what I heard, and that have long waiting queue from last, even, even right now for the next school year. It's going to be very difficult for us to, uh, manage this because we are working parents. It's impossible to. Take them to a somewhere different place rather than in, being in the school. It concerns their safety. It's not easy to have little kid commute from one place to other place. Every day and try to meet their daily needs. They also have such a good staff in Rock. They had, they are going through for the last four years and they are really good and I'm not sure how YMCA going to be. I had some experience behind YMCA earlier, which was not very great. So that the other reason you should consider to bring Rock or something more affordable, more better plan after school in. Whatever, uh, school you're trying to consolidate and bring more kids. As there are more enrollment, more people going to move to the different school, it's going to be very difficult to manage. To parents like us who have to rely pretty much on after-school care. To. Make ourselves work on what we are doing right now. So, yeah, so it's just that point I want to bring here. That's all from my side.
Thank you very much for your comments. Up next, David, and I'm sorry I can't read your last name.
Yeah, it's David Ellis. Um, I'm a parent of a child at, uh, Laneview. I just want to say for the district to choose Laneview as a school that has the infrastructure, the staff and the program for kids with special needs is pretty shameful for them to choose that school. Just want to say that. Two is, you know, I support them on the location that they recommend on. Having the best facilities for my son. And, you know, another thing I want to bring up is, you know, as a parent sitting and watching this meeting. All I hear is like numbers, you know, we gotta balance the schools and put them, you know, level out the schools, not really his needs. And, you know, on the presentation, I heard about. Building structures for music classes, building structures for this, it just this school, that school, that school, which is great, you know, have programs, but when it came to, to proposed, um. Since Sunnydale or whatever, um, there was no. Nothing though. I didn't hear any accommodations for restrooms and accommodations for a plan of these. You know, especially these students to go there. I didn't hear any plans of anything at school being done. You know, my son, he can't go to the public restroom by himself. He needs help with the staff. You know, he has a low mint issues and. I don't know, I just see he's a foresight. Nothing was brought up on any kind of support at Sunnydale or. I even don't even know the name of the school. It's kind of drawing the blank. Sommerdale. Yeah, I didn't hear any. I don't know, uh, he needs to house something in day one. I don't need plans in two, three years, we're gonna retrofit the school for special needs. He needs to have stuff in day one there. And for me not even hearing anything or any plans of being. Extra support there, that's pretty ridiculous, so. You know, like I said, these are most vulnerable students. They need the most help and. I, I don't know. He just can't be a number and just place and just, I don't know. He, he need definitely just support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our last speaker is Betty Chen.
Good evening. Um, I'm here today because, um, a couple of things, um, I would like to ask some questions regarding the demographers report. And in general, to just also, um, to ask the board members to please advocate for the communities and the families affected by closure. First of all, you know, when I was part of the consolidation committee, um, we were told that most likely all the boundaries would change. And, um, to hear that, uh, later on, when the decisions were made to close the three schools, that only the affected schools and their boundaries would change. Looking at the data and, and the presentation. It seems to me that the, the student population isn't evenly distributed. If you look at some schools, four hundred, and then you compare it to a school like Ruskin will have nearly seven hundred kids, six hundred ninety-one. That's not evenly distributed in my mind. So I hope that the board will question and, um. Think of solutions or come up with a better plan or even consider, um, changing the boundaries of all the schools. To have an even distribution. I, I say that not only just for, you know, distribution wise, but also I recall the demographer had mentioned. The declining enrollment in two, three years, how that would affect, um, enrollment again. And, um, possibly another closure. And I also think that, um. To think about having to, um, for the administrators to manage a school, um, with. Nearly seven hundred students and the kind of support is, as, you know, being a teacher or staff at that school, um, what kind of support they have. I understand that, um, no new management is necessary and I applaud that. However, you know, we can use the resources more wisely. How do you divide up all the students so that the principals and administrators have, um, equal responsibility? And that the, that, the, the community members, um, are treated fairly and also the teachers who work there are treated fairly because having. You know, one admin support a school of almost seven hundred kids, that's almost as big as the elementary schools. I mean, I'm sorry, the middle schools. The other thing I wanted to mention was, um, as, as a Cherrywood, um, parent had said that, uh, the. Students who are affected at Cherrywood are going to three different schools in the EO. My daughter's in the fourth grade class, just as the other parent, and, um, they're only, I want to say forty kids in the class. Forty fourth graders, and you want to distribute them into three different schools. They won't graduate with their, their friends. And they're the, the, the kids that I mentioned before that started distance learning in kindergarten. So they barely had time to make friends and now they won't graduate with them. And then my last comment is a general observation that, um, it seems like. I do feel for the special education families because it seems like whenever there's a problem or there's something that needs to be moved. Special education seems to be the one to be moved first. Taking consideration Ruskin, they're moving the, it seems like according to the proposal, the, um. The, the SDC class is going to be moved even though they've been at Ruskin. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Much appreciated and we definitely will take them into consideration. Uh, so next we have our study session, superintendent.
Well, this is opportunity for the board to have continued discussion on this topic. Any additional questions you may have, any additional direction you'd like to provide staff? This item will be coming back to you on the February twelfth board meeting.
Comments, questions from the board?
Sure, who wants to start? All right, okay. So, um, I'll get it started. So first thing, just as a, uh. Point of, uh. Observation is some of the comments, uh, I heard. Uh, from our, uh, special ed, uh, staff was talking about otherism, segregation. Lack of empathy. I don't know whether, we had, we had quite an open, uh. Discussion in front of the entire community and I think, uh, many of us spoke specifically about the challenges with, with moving. Our autistic kids, um, and I, I don't know where, where they are. I understand the frustration and the, uh. Uh, you know, um. Feeling of helplessness that goes with closing the. Closing a site and, and it weighs heavily on all of us and, and, and we know that and we, we did speak. Extensively about, um. The challenges of moving, uh, you know, specifically, I remember speaking, making specific comments too, and I heard some of my colleagues. Also speak about, um, the challenges that autistic kids, kids face when the environment has changed. And, you know, how we can, uh, ensure that, uh, that, that continues and I, and, um. Just, just a bit disappointed with some of the, some of the, um, labels that were used tonight, uh, I, I was not. Super impressed, but, but I, I understand the frustration that the, um, that the staff feels and I, I completely empathize with that. But, uh, above that, some of the, uh. Things that I mentioned, uh, do seem valid, uh, especially these smart boards. I thought they moved, uh, they stayed at the classroom and moved the, uh, with the program. I know that, uh, uh, ours, uh, you know. Special ed programs do use those, uh, technologies very effectively. I've seen it myself in the classroom, so. Uh, so I was wondering what, what that was about and why, why it's not, uh, being moved. And, uh, you know, what is with the, the other, other thing that, um, I did, it did occur to me when we were talking about budgets, is the. Is the, um, classroom funds, you know, if the, the teacher is moving. With their students to the target location, why shouldn't that, those funds go with them? That, that should, that should stay with them according to me. Um, and you know, I, I think, um, there's a PTA, uh, piece to it that needs to also be considered. I think, uh, that, that's something probably we, we should also talk about how that, uh, how those donation monies. Can be earmarked for some of the, uh, some of their, um. What is it called? Events and things like that, that they can carry to the, uh. Carry to the newer, new location. So what, what is the deal with the technology smart board and the, uh, classroom budget? What is, what's happening there?
Yeah, so with the smart boards, the, the smart boards that are provided for the SDC programs will move with the SDC teachers. The other, the other smart boards, um, we're looking at, they will most likely follow the teachers depending on where they go, but again. Because it's, it's open and we don't know who, who's going where and they have a choice to go to different grade level. They'll still most likely follow those teachers, but we need to figure out where they're going first and then we will move those devices accordingly. Especially if the teachers use the tool, then the tool will move with them.
So why, why the perception that, that we are not moving the, moving the technology? I mean, is there, is there a miscommunication or misunderstanding?
We haven't had a, uh, we've had just beginning discussions with principals about the movement of technology and we haven't even. Disseminated a plan yet on how those devices are gonna be moving. So, um, anything would just be just preliminary. Kyle and I have had those discussions on how we're gonna move the technology. Technology for sure would need to be moved by our technology department. But again, a lot of it just depends on where the teachers end up. And at what, at what school that they're going to. And some of our schools already have devices there, so. You know, if, if I have a smart board assigned to me, but I'm moving to a, a school and they already have the, the technology there, then. We wouldn't necessarily need to move those. So we can definitely clarify that with our principals. And the same with the site donation money. The way donation funds typically work is that they're specific to a certain, um. Funds that they've been raised for. Yeah, if they're not and they're just for general purposes, the intent is that those funds are to be spent in the current year that they're received. They're for the current year students. There are instances where those funds carry over. Not all of our school sites track donation funds to specific detail, to specific teachers. Just depends, and we've explained and. Started to have those conversations with principals that yes, encourage your staff to spend the money in the current year because it's for those students that are currently being served. If there is dollars that are then left over, we will work with how those schools have tracked those funds. And, and depending on how that is, we can move those funds. And, and depending on how that is, we can move those funds with those teachers. So it just depends site by site.
It seems very trivial to me. I mean, I, I don't think we're talking about, you know, multi-billion or even hundred, hundred thousands of dollars. It's just a couple of thousand dollars that, that's in the, in the teacher's kitty. I don't know why, why that should be, you know, why that should not be allowed.
Yeah, it just depends on how the school site tracks the money. So if Laneview is being split between two sites.
School site council decide on how those things are allocated, or PTA decides or?
No, it, it varies. It varies depending on where those donations are coming from. And certain sites do a very good job of tracking by teacher, and they know each teacher and what allocation they have. Some sites do not track that way, and they track whole school. But oftentimes, that depends on how they're choosing to utilize their funds. They may be having a, if they don't track by teacher, it may be because they've got another area of interest that they do school-wide, that the funds are supporting, like Science Lab is a great example for that, and that's where their resources go towards. So it's really dependent upon school to school. But certainly, you know, we can always improve our communication on these, and it's great to hear the feedback. And we'll go ahead and do that with our, our site administrators as we work through, even with Mr. Herman who's here. And, you know, we're working through the different challenges. We can improve upon that. But it, it varies depending on that, that donation sequence.
PTAs have their own bylaws, they're their own nonprofit entities, so they would have to follow their own procedures as far as PTA funds and where those funds subsequently move, if there are funds at, at the end of the year, and how those get distributed or spent.
Yeah, it'd be good to get some clarity for, for the sake of the teachers. You're not benefiting from any, any of that money, but for the sake of teachers to find out how they can carry that money with them and, you know, what are the options? If they cannot carry that money with them, you know, if the receiving school can allocate some of the budget, additional budget for, for them to have that, you know, extra buffer for, for that. That'll be, that'll be great, I think. I think we should be flexible with that. I don't see any reason why it cannot be.
I think also too, in terms of communication, what may be occurring is individuals having different conversations. And so we can improve in sending one message, so there's common understanding, even with those that are giving commentary on what's going to happen. I think that's what I'm hearing is occurring.
Okay. I, I also have questions about boundary, but trustee Haug, did you have anything on that?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say thank you to all the public commentators tonight. All of your concerns are valid, and we hear you, and we're definitely going to take that into consideration. We want this to be an equitable process. And, you know, we want to make sure that everybody is heard in this process, especially our special education students and students with disabilities. So I just, I was taking notes and I wanted to just go through some of the notes that I took. I don't know if you want to, I can go through them, because I, okay. So we heard that our SDC wishes to go to Northwood. Can that possibility be explored? Or can we take that into consideration? Like, what were the concerns about moving them to Vinsey Park instead of Northwood? Can we, can we talk through the process of how Vinsey Park was selected instead? Oh, Somadell, sorry, mixing up this. It's 7:00 PM. It's near my bedtime.
Yeah, and I think there's, you know, you have a variety of special education programs with just proposed relocations based on physical capacity. Mr. Franklin can also share more about potential exploration of other adjustments and what that would require us to do.
Yeah, so at Northwood, the way that we've currently distributed students based on the proposed boundary change, you know, we would be looking at Northwood not having any additional classrooms. So to move a program like that, is there ability to add portables at Northwood for students? There is. It's quite difficult, but there's room to add three portables. Whether or not that could be accomplished by August for the start of school? I don't know. Tony would have to chime in on, on whether that's possible or not. You know, the process would have to get started pretty much tomorrow morning to, to look into something like that.
Yeah, just to further clarify, I think in terms of the process that Mr. Franklin explained at the top of the presentation, what the staff did first was, you know, we waited for the numbers to come through from Mr. Williams. So we knew for the, you know, the resident students, what was that number? Because we didn't know what that number was going to be, and how many classrooms that would occupy. To then be able to see, okay, you know, what do we have available in terms of classroom space afterwards? So this is the preliminary review of that. And so, like Mr. Franklin shared, you know, there's portable options. And I just want to be clear, it doesn't mean that special ed goes in the portables. I just want to be clear on that, because as one of the staff members mentioned, and we've already shared this perspective with our site principals, as we look at integrating additional students in classrooms, best practice is grade levels are kept together, right? That's how we have all of our schools adjusted. And that would be the plan for next year, to be able to integrate students and staff together into their new school communities. And so, so we're mindful of that and looking at where do we have, with the bringing in, you know, portable modular buildings, in terms of the speed and ability to be able to do that, there's, there's one, two things. One is physical space. Do we have that, and where can it be best located? But then second is the infrastructure. So if those modulators can be connected to existing buildings with power and water, that'll be a faster feasibility for us than if we have to build that infrastructure in. So that's what changes, you know, those, those variables.
So with, with the projection, the, the student, what is it called? The enrollment projections continuing to decline, and then it'll expand the, the question to the boundary question that I had, including those, that for, for Cherrywood, especially Cherrywood is being impacted unfairly, according to the community. I understand where they're coming from. They're splitting into three different schools, which is not the easiest thing to do. So expanding on, on moving SDC potentially to Northwood and the challenges behind that. Since we're seeing a declining enrollment over the next two, three, four years, can we not grandfather the existing students, accommodate them into, into that? And then once the enrollment stabilizes, we, it becomes some, you know, non-issue, right?
So I can share with you, based on the numbers that we have with the, the new proposed boundaries, every classroom space is occupied based on what we've presented. Again, looking at including other alternative spaces that sites need. We've taken into account, you know, the fifth spaces that schools have. We've looked at, as I mentioned, you know, where will music take place? We've looked at those other things. Plus now each, each class, each number of students is increasing, so it's going to require four to five kindergarten classrooms, you know, depending on the school, and where they need to be to have appropriate restroom capacity, et cetera, for that. So unless the board, again, wants to go back and look at each site and add portables to each site, I'm not sure how much time staff would need to be able to determine that. And I don't see the ability to be able to still, you would still have a limited number of seats that you would be able to provide in doing so. Because remember that each school has a different starting point in the number of existing classrooms that they have.
True.
And so that was part of the, the issue too, in looking at where we could fit to keep, to be able to keep special education programs and create that pathway together. Being able to look at where can we have four to five classrooms to be able to create that structure? And to move it, we'd have to go back, working with Tom, and readjust the resident addresses to create more physical space.
And another thing that I didn't mention during the presentation that I want to make sure that I bring up now is that with all of these configurations and with changes to TK eligibility for next year, including students that are born between June 1st and September 1st, that's expanding our TK program. So we're going from 12 TK classes to 14 TK classrooms next year. So every elementary school will have two TK classes, which right now, many of them only have one. There's a handful, there's a couple of them that have two. And then the other thing that changed is that TK is going from a 22 to 1 teacher to student ratio to a 20 to 1 hard cap, meaning that we cannot go over 20 to 1 teacher to, to, to student. And it's actually two adults in the, per every 10 students. So all of those classes have an aid. But that's another thing that we're having to take into consideration, is having more TK classrooms at each school site too, which played into the utilization.
And this would, so yeah, appreciate that. So for, for specifically for Cherrywood then, with the, is there, I mean, if you look at the, I was looking at the, this map that was given to us with the student concentration. In that, in that area, there are not, in that impacted area between Sierra and Berriessa, there are not that many students, according to this map. If this, this is, this is accurate. So which is why I was asking, can we not, with just few number of students, can we not grandfather and the existing students? And then new enrollments, even for current year, current year new enrollments can go to, to Somadell potentially? And then keep, keep these students together until next year, when the, when things settle down? Just, it's just a matter of a year in some cases. Some of the students might be moving to a new school.
Oh, no, I completely understand what you're saying. It's again, having the physical capacity to do that. Because at Ruskin, Ruskin's configuration is already including us adding the max number of portables that we could add with existing infrastructure. So that's the, the three that you see on the map. And, and so.
How about Brooktree on the other side? How about keeping them together at Brooktree?
That we can revisit potentially. I'm not sure of the existing space there. I think another question I would have with Tom was, would be knowing what is that number of, what is that actual number of students in that neighborhood, in that specific neighborhood?
If this chart is to be believed, it's about, I think about 12, 12 to 14 maybe students that I can see in these, if these dots are accurate, in, in that, in that area.
Yeah, because one thing that we, one thing that we do know is even though with this initial round of looking at number of classrooms, et cetera, even though a school may have every classroom occupied, whether it's with the classroom of students or for extracurricular type activities, there is room within those grade spans for additional, additional children. We'd have to go back and check. Right now, the numbers are projections, and they're based on 100% returning with us in the fall, right? So there's always variability in that. But then also looking at, within those existing grade spans that the children would be going into, what number of seats are still available? That's why through the open enrollment process for transfer request, we're saying we can't give 100% guarantee. We will do our best to support families where they have a hardship of where they want to go. Because we do know there's room across grades within each school. But it isn't, we don't have room to add another additional classroom of students with the, with the current proposal.
Yeah, and I'll mention for Brooktree, specifically asking about Brooktree. The current configuration doesn't add a lot of additional students to Brooktree, but we're currently using most, almost all of the classrooms. So Brooktree's one of the smaller schools as far as number of classrooms. They have 22 classrooms. Next year, they would need 17 teachers. And then we already have current special ed program, that programming that's already there, occupying four classrooms, plus there's an occupational therapy room. So we're adding one SDC preschool classroom, which maxes out the school site. So to look at adding additional students, if we're needing to add another classroom or two classrooms, then we would have to look at then displacing one of the, the, the special ed classrooms to be able to achieve that.
And I just also wanted to speak more about the configuration at Somadell, moving our autism program over there from Laneview. Since we're not able to accommodate the Northwood request, from my understanding, are we able to allocate funds from our bond money to add an infrastructure to make it a self-enclosed classroom instead of the pod situation? Because I know some schools have, you know, like curtains. But, you know, is there something more that we can provide? And can that be something that the teachers are collaborating with Tony on, on how we can make it a self-enclosed classroom instead of a pod?
So that's something that we've looked at, which, you know, it sounds like it would be something very simple, but the way that those classrooms are configured, not only is adding the doors difficult, but we have ADA issues that we would have to address if we were to enclose those classrooms. And from my understanding, from, from Tony, is that we would need to make changes to the berms on the, on the outside of all of those classrooms to become ADA compliant, which is very expensive, and it's not something that could be done by next summer. It's something that would cost, it's not even that it would cost a million dollars. It would cost a number of millions of dollars to be able to come into compliance for ADA purposes, to then add those doors. It's something that has been on my mind when talking to Tony and visiting those school sites. The cost is just extremely high, but we were trying to figure out ways that we could do it in a less costly way to still meet those requirements and to potentially add doors. It's just something that's not currently in the bond program that we would then have to add in the future.
Those, those are valid concerns, right? I mean, because, and this goes back again to our discussion about specific needs for, for, you know, children, especially its children, how, how challenging it is to, to, you know, take care of them during their, during their school days. You know, those are valid concerns about not being able to, you know, keep them within that, within that area of, of instruction. And how do we mitigate that? I mean, it's, it's a valid concern, according to me. I mean, if it's, if it's an open floor plan. I, I think I was at, I'm trying to, trying to remember whether it was, it was indeed Somadell or maybe Brooktree.
Brooktree actually has the SDC class in the pods. And specifically, they've created those little doors.
Yes, I've seen.
The kitty doors for the students, and it's very difficult for the students to open them.
And when I was at Brooktree.
Create like a little baby gate, I guess you could call them.
Actually, when I was at Brooktree, there was a student that, that, that ran away.
Well, there's also a back door too. So there's a back door, and there's that door within the pods.
So tho- those are actually valid concerns that, that, you know, we need to find, find a way to mitigate those, those concerns. What, what, what can we do to, what, what else can we do to, to address that?
Well, I think the other thing, going back to the original question that trustee Haug had, was what would the exploration of doing portable buildings at Northwood to expand the physical space there? So we, we would need to be able to go back, figure out what that would look like, and bring you back another schematic with the related cost to doing so.
Let's see how that, how that looks. So does that mean we, we have another study session?
Well, you're not taking action today.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
So this is giving us time to be able to bring that information back in February. It'll be an action item for February, but the board always has the ability to make, to move, to not take action, and to move it to another subsequent meeting. But just keep in mind that we also want to get information and clarity back to our parents to be able to let them know where their new school locations will be. And so, you know, I would recommend that if the board needs more time, we meet within that same week. So that way, we can continue and expedite the conversation and the, you know, the thought process behind everything, so that we can communicate. you know, the thought process behind everything, so that we can communicate to our families and give them some clarity on where their children will go in the fall. Many of the next step items that were shared with Cabinet are dependent on these boundary decisions.
I also want to bring up a point too, if that is something that we do look into, I would recommend also looking at moving some of those Vincy Park special ed programs then to Laneview. So to balance the number of, to Somerdale, excuse me, sorry, to Somerdale. Okay. You know? So just to balance the load as well, because I also feel that that's also something that we should reconsider as well.
Yeah, I support those recommendations. I would love to see schematics to try and accommodate for Northwood. And then if that's not feasible, I want to also see potential schematics, like what it would look like to accommodate at Somerdale. You know, I just want to make sure that we explore all our options to make sure that our students are receiving the care that they need. Is there any other point? Oh, I had a different point, but if you wanted to talk about anything on this topic still.
No, I had a different thing also. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to also address, dress code was also brought up at Northwood and the differing dress codes at Northwood and Laneview. I just wanted to recommend that the students who are not able to accommodate for the dress code reach out to our district or to Tom to see if we can provide any accommodation.
Yeah, we don't, we can also go back to what dress code, what the policies on dress code at the schools do.
That's a great idea. Let's do that too.
Let's think about that. That makes more sense to me.
Thank you. I, I would support that recommendation to take a look at the dress codes to ensure that they're similar or same. And I'm going to keep going down my list if you don't mind. Also, teachers also brought up seniority when having decision as to what schools they're going to go to if they're impacted. I would like that conversation to happen if that's possible.
Yeah, what we have in our MOU and also in our CBA is that we have a different criteria that we use to move people, including credentials, experience, and also seniority. So there's a different ways of doing it. Again, for the schools that are closed, if the teachers want to follow their students, they have first priority to move with the students, even if there's somebody more senior from another school that wants to move to a certain school, for example. So seniority is not always the only criteria that we use.
Yeah, and I would also support, I also do support that, that teachers who are impacted should get first priority as well to follow their students. I also, we talked about the tech and I also wanted to bring up speech pathologist classrooms. Was that included in the schematics or can we take a look at that or see, evaluate how they are impacted for the school sites?
Yeah, so we looked at speech psychologists, RSP, we looked at all of those, OT, APE. We did take a look at all of those. We discussed with the principals at each of the school sites where those staff currently are located. And so then we also discussed in Cabinet and made sure that all of those have spots. So they're not on these maps, but we looked at school maps for every single school site to make sure that there was a, a location for all of those folks. And I don't think in any of the scenarios that we displaced where any of the speech, you know, RSP is maybe getting moved here or there at some of the school sites, but we made sure there is a, a space for everybody.
So, okay, so just reassurance that our speech pathologist, they will have spaces at each of our school sites to ensure that, okay, perfect. And also evaluation of after-school programs. If we're able to make sure that that is similar, if not the same, over the different school sites, because childcare is very expensive and it is really important for us to maintain our after-school care. And hope, and we should add that information to when we release our boundaries, you know, let them know of their options at the incoming school sites of the after-school programs.
Yeah, and just to share, you know, I know in the past, we haven't always had after-school care at all of our schools. But when we received the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program funds, that brought after-school programming to each site. We do have different providers that we've been consolidating over the years to preferred providers that work best with our families and will continue to do that for next year. They're all aware of our consolidation process and know of the increased staffing that they will need at existing schools to support our children. That affordability factor is closely tied to those Expanded Learning Opportunity Program funds. Those students are a priority in accessing those resources to be able to have their families support after-school care. And so that will, that will continue and that will be maximized at each school.
So. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say thank you. That was all my questions.
Okay. So.
Dr. McCurry wants to add more. Ed Services Division oversees all of the after-school programming placement.
So the question about Rock that came up specifically, we'll be shutting down some of the school sites with some of the after-school programs. So we'll just reopen them at the new school sites. And we're already in collaboration with all of the after-school providers to make sure that that's happening. And YMCA will be continuing and probably adding more staffing, specifically at some of the schools that are being affected. So those are already conversations we're having.
So two of our sites, I think Cherrywood and Toyon, both of the, both of them are closing. I'm not sure about Toyon, but they both have the San Juan Batista after-school, before after-school care, or what's happening with those two?
So San Juan Batista, remember, is, so they're, they offer a variety of services. They offer early learning services as well as school age programming. They actually lease on our properties. And so I've already spoken with their executive director, she's well aware of the changes that we have. She actually has held on some adjustments that they were making, waiting for the decisions that were going to be made, because their funding has changed in how they can support programs in, in response to districts getting Expanded Learning Opportunity Funds. So they are in the process of transitioning their after-school programs into early learning programs, more specifically infant to toddler. That is kind of their targeted age group now that public schools are going into, all four-year-olds going into TK. So that has impacted their enrollment. And so they've also have been downsizing their programs and are closing some of their locations as a result of that. But their directors well aware of what's available. And so we're working together with them on their expansion. Right now, I know, for example, at Noble, they've had an after-school program there that they preliminarily put on hiatus. And in my recent conversation with them, they're looking at turning that into an early learning center hub, similar to what they have over at Northwood. So they're reimagining their programs and how they want to use their space.
And we do have a very, the YMCA program at Toyon is very successful. And so we're already talking with YMCA about potentially moving their sites to Noble perhaps, or to Somerdale, because Somerdale has the ACES program, which is another, a different after-school provider. So we just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases at all seven of our elementary schools for next year to provide at least two options for after-school care. And so with that, just like Dr. Fuentes said, the, the pricing is on a sliding scale. And for some, it would be free for after-school. And not only after-school, but we're also talking when we have holidays. So this upcoming February break, there's going to be a three-day raft summer program or intercession. And also during the summer, we're going to have support at those sites as well. And it's almost free for the students that qualify.
Good to know. Yeah, I think, I think I, that's all I have. But I still want to, want to mention, bring it up that, you know, for some of the, especially for the impacted schools, the schools that are, that are closing, you know, in, let us, let us in good faith, you know, try to, try to offer them some flexibility, you know? I, they're, from, from their perspective, they're giving up a lot, they're sacrificing a lot for the sake of the, of the school district. So we should be in our approach, be as flexible as possible in accommodating their, their requests, especially with, you know, with, with our SDC program specifically, and also with our student movements, you know, if we can give them reasonable accommodations into a choice school, you know, like I mentioned, grandfathering some of the, you know, small subset of students into, into two schools instead of three with the future students going to, to the new attendance area. I, I, I think we should provide that kind of, that amount of flexibility, because we, we still need their support for, for our future programming needs. And they have in good faith, supported us during COVID, you know, with all our decisions that we made during, during the pandemic. And, you know, I think we should just be able to reciprocate that, that by, by being flexible. So I'm, I know I'm putting a lot on your, on your shoulders, Dr. Fuentes too, but, but I think we need to also, you know, consider those, those emotional aspects. I, I totally understand parity and, you know, keeping, making sure all the schools have good numbers. And I get that, you know, as a board member, I get that. But, you know, as a parent, I want to keep my community together, right? I don't want, I don't want to be isolated. So please maybe, you know, as a, as an earnest request to, to, to try to rethink, maybe, you know, see how, how better we can approach it. And what are those classroom locations that, that have that, that additional one or two student spaces where we can accommodate those transfers, especially for the, for, for the impacted schools? That, that'll be, that'll be great and I would appreciate that, that if we can continue thinking about that.
Any other questions from anybody? So I have a, I have a question. So, you know, so questions about technology and, you know, like school fund, stuff like that. So these are things, I mean, that we have to take action first on determining the borders. And then some of those things are going to get worked out, right? As we go along, is there a way for, you know, staff to provide kind of their input? Or, you know, if they have questions or concerns, how can they provide those to the districts? So we can then consider them as we're going through this process, once the board makes our decision on, you know, the, the new boundaries?
Yeah, I think that's great. I think there's two, two avenues. One is of course directly with their principals, so that way we get that feedback. The second is also through their represented, their representation, because Rico is meeting regularly, you know, with Mr. Herman. And that's a great place for us to find out where there's common miscommunication that we can streamline across the district. So I would say those are the two main avenues, but our folks know we're always available to you.
We can come to staff meetings, we can come.
We've been doing that as well.
To hear what, what the issues are. Any further discussion from the board on this topic?
I just wanted to remind, one, one more thing about the, the Ruskin Sierra Mon Circle. If you haven't made a note of the, of the start times that I mentioned at the beginning. Just, just want to make sure that.
The schedules.
Just double check the schedule so we can, you know, mitigate those traffic impacts at that time. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, and just a reminder, we're not taking action at this time. This is just a study session, so we can go over the proposed boundary changes. We will take, take action. What's, what's the date of the?
Potential action would be recommended on the 12th unless we need more conversation. But like I said, we would want to expedite with an additional meeting shortly thereafter. So we don't have everyone on, on hold without a clarity in a decision.
So we'll have further discussion there. And if people have, you know, they want to come back and have other questions or comments that, you know, we can address to staff at that point, please do so. All right, so.
Once action is taken, how soon will the Romans be opened afterwards?
Kyle?
Could you come up? Can you?
Okay, I think I heard the answer. So about a week or so?
We have to go into Infinite Campus, which is our student information system, and actually change each address, saying it was scheduled for this school. And then we have to say it's now scheduled for this school. And it's, it's address by address by address. We're trying to do it a little bit faster with a consultant, but we don't know for sure that we'll be able to do any faster than we've done it in the past. Okay? Okay, thank you, everybody, for all your inputs. And, and again, so this is something that, you know, until the board takes action, we can change the boundaries, right? We can decide something entirely different. So that's kind of, and I understand your feeling, right? In your case, we kind of blindsided you a little bit, but until, you know, because we had, it was a continuation of meetings. Yes, it was a continuation. We had, you know, a lot of discussion regarding that. So, you know, and I do apologize for that, but until the board takes action, anything is game basically. Okay, so next on our agenda is closed session. So we have one item for closed session, Student Discipline or Other Confidential Student Matters, Education Code Section 35146, 48918, 49, 48900, 49, 48912B and 49060 and 20 USC Section 1232G. So the, the board will now adjourn to closed session and we'll come back and report out any action we take in closed session. Uh, so the, the board will now adjourn to closed session and we'll come back and, uh, report out any action we take in closed session.
All right, so we'll reconvene the open session portion of our meeting. Dr. Fuentes?
Thank you. The board met in closed session to consider the expulsion recommendation of a student number 71638711. Per our discussion, we are seeking a motion to expel student 71638711 and that the expulsion be suspended under the condition Per our discussion, we are seeking a motion to expel student 71638711 and that the expulsion be suspended under the conditions stipulated.
I'll move to accept that recommendation.
I'll second that.
So moved in second. Comments or questions from the board? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes. All right, so adjournments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 9:50. Thank you very much.